All to order. Uh, we're ready to go, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's, uh...
Roll call. Commissioner Morecki. Commissioner Dogg.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, I... He's excused. I heard from him, yeah.
Commissioner Baker McCormick. Commissioner Colleen.
Present.
Chairman of the Forum, present.
All right. Next item, sir.
Next item, B. Approval of the August 13th, 2019 meeting minutes.
Pleasure. Moved and supported. Any additions, corrections, changes to the minutes? Here we none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, before we go to unfinished business, uh, Mr. Clerk, I just want to comment on the agenda today. We do have two addendas, one that just showed up, uh, not that long ago. Um, I think about seven of the items on the agenda today are related to the Youth Assistance Program, uh, an annual thing that we do, and we can, uh, we can handle all of those in one item. I would ask staff to go through and pick out the numbers so that when we have a motion, because they're spread across the agenda. Um, another kind of a bulk, uh, and rather routine item today is there's four or five locations, uh, that we contract for, for distributing WIC cards around the county, and we can handle those all in one motion as well. So if staff can get those agenda numbers, uh, have those agenda numbers ready for the WIC, you know, which ones they are. Um, and also, uh, before us today is the, uh, considering the approval of the new director for, um, senior services in the county. And after copious inquiries, um, I think it's the last item on the second addenda, we're going to move that up to the first item that we, uh, consider today. So just to organize the, uh, paperwork that we're looking at here, I just wanted to comment on those. So with that, Mr. Clerk, uh, what's up next?
Next is item C. Unfinished business. We have none. Chairman?
Okay.
Next, as instructed, moving to addenda number two, item D-11. Approval of the appointment to the position of Director of Senior Services.
All righty, and I understand our nominee is with us, and so, uh, oh, oh. So we'll go with, uh, names and titles, and then we'll, uh, get into this a little bit.
Good afternoon. Janelle Allen, Chief Operating Officer for the County Executive's Office.
All righty.
Joan Separkas, Division Director, Wayne County Senior Services.
Lisa Whitmore Davis.
All right. Uh, I know you want to do a little introduction, and then if we can have Ms. Davis, uh, give us a little on her resume and, uh, why she wants to take this job, and then after that we'll go to some questions from committee members. So it's all yours, Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Commissioner. It is our great pleasure to present Ms. Lisa Whitmore Davis as our candidate for the next Senior Services Director. And after, as you see from her resume, and I'm sure she expounds on her experience, we think she is really the ideal candidate to lead the department at this time. Uh, she will talk to you. She's coming directly from AARP, so she has direct experience and very recent experience with working with seniors in our community, and in particular in Wayne County, even though our current position really expands far beyond the county. But we believe too that her credentials really lent her the best candidate to lead in three focused areas, in particular where we think our next director needs to focus. The first is finding additional funding sources for our senior nutrition program and funding for even more programs so we really can assist our community seniors with maintaining their independence in their own homes. As you all know, the county now currently subsidizes the Meals on Wheels Program and Senior Nutrition by over a half a million dollars, and that's an awful lot.
General fund, correct.
A general fund. And we do that to ensure that there is no waitlist, and I believe on behalf of Mr. Evans, who totally is committed, as well as with the commission, that we not have a waitlist for our seniors, we believe that is a good use of that money. But we actually would like to minimize, if not outright eliminate, that subsidy, so that would be one of the first things that we are challenging. Uh, we would challenge Ms. Whitmore Davis is to focus on finding some additional resources where we can eliminate the county subsidy. Eliminate that subsidy, though, will only help with still continuing the Meals on Wheels Program. We believe that we would love to provide far more services for our community seniors, again, so we can focus on them maintaining their independence, to stay in their homes as long as they choose. So we'll also be looking for funding for additional program initiatives. Through that, we think we will definitely need to better leverage community and corporate partners, not just for funding, but just for even brainstorming and thought-provoking to find solutions, again, to help our seniors maintain their independence in their homes. And lastly, which I actually think would be the easiest thing, is actually making sure that we are following best practices from our day-to-day operations, under the phenomenal leadership of Joan Separkas, who everyone knows has been almost a 30-year employee with the county, worked 32 years. And as you all know, Joan is our division director, and Joan oversees the day-to-day operations, which I must say that after working with Joan very closely, especially for these last nine months since Kevin Keller retired, she really runs it like a well-oil machine. And even with that said, and she has a phenomenal staff, you probably don't know, she really only has seven actual permanent staff, full-time staff, but she does have contract site staff, which are site managers and, um, site, other site staff, and then we do it with a team of over 800 volunteers. That takes a lot of coordination, but, so Ms. Whitmore will be coming in with a very phenomenal team, where Joan will still continue to lead the day-to-day operations. So with that said, I'll let, uh, Ms. Whitmore Davis go into more, uh, details about her background, and then, of course, we're already available for questions.
Okay, and then if you would also, as you go through your background, give us a little bit about your vision for what you want to get accomplished in this job, and then we will go to questions from committee members, so...
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Janelle, and thank you, Joan, for this opportunity, and thank you to all of the commissioners for the opportunity to come before you today. Um, I'm Lisa Whitmore Davis. I am a lifelong Michigander. I'm originally from the south, southwest side of the state and been in the Detroit area for over 21 years. I'm a 25-year experienced, uh, uh, executive in nonprofit. Uh, I have worked in the legislature, in the senate. I have also worked in county government, working for the county clerk, Ms. Kathy Garrett, and also in nonprofit, in higher ed, as a development professional, as the Director of Development at the Eugene Applebaum College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences. There I was charged with raising over a million dollars every year, um, during a very difficult time in our economy, during the year of, I always say, during 2008, even people who are quite affluent were having a difficult time due to our national economy, but we were always able to meet our development goals, both creatively, working with small donors, mid-sized donors, and of course, our larger corporate donors, uh, receiving both cash, treasure, but also in-kind donations, which also help perpetua, um, uh, move forward our programs. My last nine years of service have been at AARP. I serve currently as the Associate State Director of Multicultural Outreach and Community Engagement. AARP tapped me to serve as the interim Vice President for Multicultural Leadership for our national enterprise for over eight, eight months, and as I shared with Janelle, I didn't want to leave Michigan, and at the time I was caregiving for my 85-year-old father, so moving to DC was not an option for me, but I love Detroit and I love our state. So really, my heart and my home of work really resides here, but I still serve as a consultant to the new Vice President to help her as she is, uh, moving into this role. Helping in regards to best practices, I am tapped, uh, across the United States for AARP to train and teach our staff around best practices in working in the multicultural space, especially because here in Detroit, I'm proud that when I took this job nine, nine years ago, I did not want to just solely focus in the African-American community, because if we really want to do true multicultural work in this area, you have to embrace the Arab-American community, the Latino, the Asian-American, the American Indian, LGBT, and as, and as well as various levels of diversity inside of the African-American community. And over the last nine years, a lot of the programs that I have created or, uh, took to the next level that were initiated from AARP toolkits, I have tried to ensure that older adults received what they needed at that time, either health, self, and wealth, and personal fulfillment, which I always say is a code word for fun. Uh, breaking down isolation is imperative to the aging process and to anyone at any age, and a lot of the programs that I have initiated as in this role have always been geared to break down isolation, educate people, as well as show how we can come together, even if we're from all various, um, cultural communities, how we as Detroiters and, and older adults can, can work together. To answer your question, Commissioner, uh, Colleen, I have thought about my vision as well as some of the many things that Janelle, Ms. Allen, has shared with me that need to take place in this division. Uh, I would tap immediately into my development background to help assess how can we line up additional resources to help eliminate this deficit, uh, that the county is now addressing with the waitlist, but also how we reach out to the many, uh, corporate partners here in southeastern Michigan and here in Wayne County that want to step forward either through the gift of treasure or the gift of time or in-kind resources to help us provide stronger and better programs for older adults that live here in Wayne County. Um, I also believe that if it's a well-oil machine, there's no need to tinker with it, uh, always looking at maybe assessing how you can help. Um, but I am just really proud to be able to come to an organization where it has been running well, and now I will be able to maybe give some new insight if need be, but if it is working well, again, as I said, why should we try to re, 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 uh, reimagine it? Um, I feel that if there was a couple things that I could do, I spoke already to the fundraising, my, utilizing my fundraising expertise. Uh, I love working with volunteers, because in order to have good, uh, fundraising campaigns and outreach campaigns, you, they're powered by volunteers. Volunteers have a wealth of knowledge, that sometimes we isolate them and only allow them to do one action. One thing that I would love to do is to do an assessment of the current volunteer body to see what are other skills and abilities that they might want to share with the county through the Department of Senior Services. Uh, also, how can we, um, provide a way for folks to learn more about what the county does, uh, all of the various departments? Seniors are always looking for information. In my role now, I run, I don't run anything, the volunteers run a AARP Information Center. It's run by volunteers. It's open from Monday, Monday to Friday, 10 to 3, and we are bombarded with calls of people who are looking for information, and a lot of those calls pertain to services or things that, uh, the county provides. Of course, we have resources and the internet to redirect those calls and help seniors minimize that, that runaround, but how can we, as the Department of Senior Services, coordinate with all of our sister and brother departments to bring that information forward to the community and to older adults especially, so that they can know, this is what the county does for me and I didn't know it, or this is how I get to it and how I can connect to that resource? I think those are immediate things that, uh, in my vision, uh, could be done, and I would, uh, love to work with the current team to help execute that. Um, but, uh, again, always believing that we should, uh, look at the vision that you, the commission, and Mr. Evans has outlined for the county, and then see how our strategic plan as it is now, and then maybe as we look at it going forward under my leadership, how we can make sure we're addressing the needs that the commission and Mr. Evans has outlined.
Thank you very much, Ms. Whitmore Davis. I'll turn it over to questions from committee members, but I will make a quick suggestion to you, uh, that a conversation over at the Detroit Wayne Mental Health Authority might be valuable. We serve 70,000, uh, individuals over there, and, uh, maybe a discussion on what the needs are of the seniors that are receiving services through there might be, uh, a profitable discussion to have. Committee members, uh, questions for the nominee? Holy cow. Let's have a coronation, then. Please, Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I looked at your impressive resume, and, um, just a question or what your thoughts are behind transportation for seniors in, in Detroit?
Oh, great question. Thank you, Commissioner Baker McCormick. Transportation is always a challenge. Uh, in my current role, we always are trying to reimagine, how can we make our events and our activities more accessible for older adults that live in Detroit as well as out county? And I would love to look at, how can we incorporate, uh, looking at the future, autonomous vehicle, future, but the currently, how will the new transportation, um, approach from the three counties? Because I, I'm, I'm a news junkie, and I'm hoping that, uh, we will begin to have more dialogue around how we will, uh, connect our current transportation sent, uh, systems across cities inside of Wayne County, so that Detroit and out, outs, out, uh, out-county states, cities have more connectivity. Um, I think there's opportunities for teaching older adults how to use Uber and Lyft, even though some feel uncomfortable, but I, I think they're uncomfortable because they're not comfortable using the technology. But that, if, if they're not able to, uh, utilize technology, what current grassroots transportation systems exist that we can provide them the information of how to get and connect with those? I think those are some initial thoughts, as well as that future, uh, thinking, how will we in Wayne County incorporate autonomous vehicle research and make sure that older adults are included in that mix? Because as the county is aging, many of us will need to utilize, uh, transportation in various levels, whether we are an older adult or have a temporary disability or have a limited ability. We need to find out how we can, uh, best do that for the future.
Questions from committee members? We'll take a motion if, uh... Okay, um, we'll give two seconds here, just in case anybody forgot a question that they meant to ask. Um, okay, uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you for being here today, Ms. Whitmore Davis. A week from Thursday, the final vote of full board will be taken. You're welcome to come. Uh, that's not so much mandatory, because you've appeared before the committee, uh, but if you would like to, 10 a.m. a week from Thursday downstairs.
Okay. Thank you so much. It was a pleasure to be before all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Returning to the agenda, item D-1, approval of modification number one to a two-year, nine-month contract with two one-year options to renew with the Well Path LLC.
Okay, people can join us at the table that are, uh, involved with this. Um, I want to do a couple of things here before we get into discussion. Um, I see you brought a PowerPoint.
I did.
Yeah. Uh, we'll get to that in a sec. Um, but I've also asked, uh, going through, um, the staff analysis here, there were a couple of references in there, uh, to some, uh, there's a couple of legal things that are going on with regards to the jail, um, so I wanted just to briefly have our counsel just describe what those are, just for the background here. And also, um, you have been provided with a copy of the, uh, audit, uh, that is now currently in the Audit Committee. We're going to be back at it again tomorrow, uh, but I wanted the Auditor General to come by and, uh, briefly describe, very protective of the, uh, independence of the Auditor General, so, uh, none of the conversation is around what the Auditor General might think, uh, about, uh, taking a one-year option, but just to describe briefly what the findings in the audit are, um, if you haven't seen that yet, and then that might also provide some basis of a discussion. And then after that, Mr. Brooks, we will go to, uh, your PowerPoint and then into discussion from there. So if you'd like to do the introductions here for who's at the table, and then we'll get going.
Dave Brooks, Director of Health, Human and Veteran Services.
Yeah, I barely got the other one now. I got to work on this one.
We'll get you a T-shirt.
I'll just read it backwards.
Keith Dugorkensky, Correctional Healthcare Administrator for the Department.
Kamal Kepuru, Finance Director, Management and Budget for Health, Human and Veteran Services.
All right, thank you for being here. If I can start with, uh, Commission Counsel here, uh, in your paperwork, there is a description of a, uh, a consent order from Third Circuit Court that I believe goes back to the mid-'90s even, uh, regarding jail overcrowding, but, uh, our counsel attends, uh, the ongoing sessions with that, so if you can also mention if, in that consent order, there's, uh, uh, they're talking about any of the issues, uh, around the, the health and wellness of, uh, of people that are staying in the jail? And then the other brief reference there was in the, in the, uh, in the staff, in the green sheets. It's a little undetermined, but somewhere in the last year, year and a half, the feds have, uh, the, have started a, a looksee into the, um, what's going on in the jail. I don't know, and counsel can tell us how much we do know about that, uh, but, uh, we have a contract for an attorney for the committee, and I think that's coming to us fairly soon.
Yeah, okay.
Or it already did. So anyway, just so we have the background on those two items, uh, Counsel, would you like to, uh, briefly describe those two?
Through the chair, as indicated, there is a consent agreement, um, dating back to the 1970s that govern...
Yeah, it was the '70s.
...operations, um, of the jail. That includes security, um, that concludes the conditions of the jail, that also includes, um, healthcare, the provision of healthcare at the jails. There are regular meetings with, um, the Chief Judge of the Circuit Court, Judge Kenny. We meet at this point. We've been meeting about every other month with regards to those issues. Included in those meetings are myself on behalf of the commission, um, the department on behalf of the administration. Well Path or CCS is also generally present at those meetings, and they're also counsel for the inmates, so they are represented as well at those meetings. We have had numerous discussions with regards to, um, items related to the provision of healthcare in those meetings. Anytime there is a concern, um, there, that is generally addressed at those meetings with Judge Kenny, and that consent order does govern the standard of care that is to be provided, and that standard of care is reflected in CCS's contract, and they are bound to abide by that general standard. In addition to that, Commissioner mentioned, Chairman, uh, Chairman Colleen mentioned that there's a DOJ investigation. We, as a commission, don't have much information regarding the details of that, other than we have higher counsel, and the county has been providing, um, information and responding to the DOJ, but the details of exactly what they're looking at, I don't know that they've actually been provided to this body.
No, I don't believe they have, but it's not unusual for, uh, the feds to come in and say, "Give us every scrap of paper that you have," and then what they're looking for in all of that, uh, you only know when indictments come out or something, but, uh, if that occurs. Commissioner Morecki?
The question with this, um, this DOJ investigation, would this, could this be something that was 10 years ago, or is there a, uh, time constraint that we think, um, something that's being looked into?
Oh, I'm looking at court counsel who's been, um, assisting with the responses to the DOJ.
Linda Fandi, Assistant Corporation Counsel. The DOJ commenced, uh, their investigation October of 2018, and the time parameters go back through 2000, 2016.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, with the feds, they could be going back further, and, you know, it's, but it's a mystery what they're...
Well, no, that's my question. Could they be going back further than 2016?
So the source of, of the complaints that the DOJ has, um, initiated their investigation have not been disclosed to the county. Uh, they did initiate or limit the timeframe to 2016 forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Morecki?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, I think I also will comment at this, uh, time that I've talked to Chief Judge Kenny, and I think at the appropriate time in the near future, uh, have him come to committee and discuss, uh, from his perspective, uh, since he's involved in the consent agreement and pla, and they have the specialty courts over there, you know, a mental health court and a veterans court, and, uh, he does have some perspectives on, uh, on the provision of, uh, healthcare in the jail, so I will be asking him. Other questions on what counsel raised? You had Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Just to the point that Commissioner Morecki made, um, do we know what it, it is about, or...
No.
We don't know if it's...
No.
Okay. Health-related or...
Because they haven't disclosed the, the complaint that they're basing their investigation on, so we don't know. If I'm stepping all over you, counsel.
So they did give a general allegation of ADA violations related to the provision of, uh, healthcare services at the jail.
Okay, so that's lurking out there as well, uh, as we discuss an ongoing relationship. Um, with that, I'd like to ask the, uh, County Auditor General if she would, and everybody has been provided a copy of the audit today, if you can just discuss the findings, uh, that you have that, uh, are perhaps relevant to, uh, our discussion today.
Sure. Marcy Cora, Auditor General. Just briefly, a little background, we presented this report to the Audit Committee, it lasts two weeks ago on Wednesday. We got about halfway through it. We're going to continue our discussion at the meeting tomorrow. But we performed a performance engagement of the Correct Care Solutions Contract. We had three objectives, was, first one was to assess costs to the county for contracting jail medical services, assess the contractor's compliance with key contract provisions, and assess whether the county is providing effective oversight over the contract provisions. Something I do want to state, and we have it included in our report, our engagement was not to assess the quality of the care provided to the inmates, because this would be beyond the scope of the audit, as we have no opinion on the quality of care, as we do not have the medical expertise, but what we tried to do is look at the processes that are in place to ensure there's proper oversight, to ensure that that quality of care is taking place. So the findings I'm going to go through are going to be at a high level, because I know we have a lot on the agenda today, but I'll start off with the first objective, which was to assess costs to the county for contracting jail medical services. In our audit report, we do outline a lot of the cost information for background purposes, but our first finding was related to the Correct Care Solution invoices lack supporting documentation. What happens is the county receives a, one, for the first nine months of the contract, they received a one-ninth of the budget bill, and they paid the contractor, and for the second year, which is a full 12-month, they paid one-twelfth of the budget. What happens on a, there's a true-up on a quarterly basis, even though the contract required a yearly true-up, there was a quarterly true-up, which we believe was better for the county. And when they get the true-up, they have the actual invoice, the, of the actual costs, but we found is there's no supporting documentation with the invoice. So the county's relying on the vendor as far as what their actual cost is, so, you know, we don't have any assurances that what the services we're getting is what we're paying for based on what's submitted to the county. The second, I'm going, I'll do the recommendation, because these three kind of go together. There's also the second recommend, finding was related to the startup costs. As part of the original contract, the contract allowed $107,500 of startup costs to be billed to the county. There's no explanation in the contract of what could or could not be included in these costs, but we found that the contractor billed the county over and above the $107,500, but it was capped at the $107,500, but again, there was no supporting documentation outlining what these actual costs were, you know... You know, we received a spreadsheet that showed meals, travels, things like that, but nothing to actually validate the cost. Then the third finding represented no support for staff costs. Wages represented about 60% of the total expenditures. However, again, the county receives no documentation to support what those actual wages expenditures are, such as a payroll register or any kind of report from the vendor. So these three recommendations we had is the county needs to implement some kind of procedures to ensure validations of the costs that are being submitted to the county, so we have assurance that what we're paying, what the services we're getting are what we're paying for. And we're talking about in the first nine months, actual costs were $13 million, and fiscal year 2018, actual costs were $16.7 million. But I do want to state that in fiscal year, the first nine months, we're 1.3 under budget, and in fiscal year 2018, we're 2.4 under budget.
Before you move on to the next one, with an audit, management is given the opportunity to respond in the audit to your findings. Has management disagreed with any of your findings here with regards to, you know, perhaps a lack of documentation? Has management disagreed and said, "No, you're wrong"?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, okay.
We've worked real closely with management, they're working on their corrective action.
Well, and I think that's important. There is going to be a corrective action plan, and we will look at this in committee, but management is not disagreeing with the findings, that we have some work to do. Do you have a question, Commissioner Morecki?
No, I just have a statement.
Yep.
When we approved this contract initially, I thought we were told that someone was going to be keeping their eye on every little thing that was going on with this contract, so I'm surprised to hear that we don't even, we're not even getting invoice support, so...
Well, that's why I wanted to put this on the table as a basis for discussion.
Yeah, because I just remember a lot of discussion. I thought someone was going to be totally devoted to making sure this contract, everything was put into place when it was approved.
Madam Auditor General, you have your four.
The next objective was to assess the contractor's compliance with key contract provisions, and because staffing was the largest part of the contract, we wanted to have some type of insurance on at least our, the FTEs that were being reported to county could be validated. So what we did is we took a sample month of a report, the county receives a one-page report that shows what the budgeted FTEs were, and compared it to what the actual FTEs were. The county was to provide, the vendor was to provide 1.3.6 actual FTEs, and then nine backup FTEs for a total of 118.6 total FTEs. So what we did, we took this one monthly period, we tried to reconcile two time sheets to validate these hours, so we had some type of assurance on the hours. We found that our first recommendation, 04A, when we requested queries from the vendor for the time sheets, we weren't, didn't receive reliable queries. The first set of queries, we were missing about 30-some employees, so we thought we were missing employees. So they ran the query again, we got the second query, we got the ones we were missing the first time, but then the second query didn't have ones from the first query. So we had no reliability on the queries that were run by the vendor for the time sheets. The second one has to do with productive and non-productive time. Productive time is when a nurse or employee is actually in the facility working, or non-productive time would be vacation, holiday, sick time, that. We found is, based on our analysis of the time sheets during our period, was also the Thanksgiving holiday, we found that they were misclassifying productive hours and non-productive hours. What was happening on the employee that received pay for the holiday, the Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, their hours for receiving pay but not actually working was being classified as productive time. We also found that those employees that came in and worked the holiday, their actual hours worked was being classified as non-productive time, so there was a misclassification of those hours, which can lead to an incorrect reporting of total actual FTEs. We also found as far as doing with the holidays, when employees were working, say, double time, they worked, they worked on the holidays, so it would be an eight-hour pay, but they, it was a holiday, so they could pay double time, it was misclassifying the X-rated hours that really had nothing to do with actual physical hours, but classifying it as productive time rather than not, shouldn't be classified at all, because there's really no time. Some minor things we found with the staffing is they use agency nurses, and for a period of time, agency nurses were being reported on the time sheets and also being reported through invoices, so it was very hard to reconcile what the total number of actual hours that should have been charged from the agency nurses to reconcile it to the time report. We were provided assurance that they weren't paid twice, but because we don't have any supporting documentation for payroll anyways, we were not able to verify that. We found there was discrepancies between what was in the time sheets and what was reported in the summary report, and there didn't appear there was a good reconciliation of time sheets to the summary report. So it's all kind of rolled into, when we looked at this one-month period, we're supposed to have 103.6 productive FTEs. We found that CCS reported 98.45 productive, however, when we did our calculation based on what should have been productive, we came up with 93.46. So you can see we're about 10 FTEs under what we should have for the productive hours. And the same thing for the non-productive, CCS reported 10.66. Based on our calculation, we came out to 13.43, because we classified them the way they believed they should have been. So our total FTEs was 106.89, we should have been at 118. So based on the one monthly report, we looked at, it appeared that we didn't, weren't in compliance with the number of FTEs required. And this is all important, too, because we need to make sure that the hours that are being charged to the county have to be in compliance with the contract, but we also have to make sure our productive and non-productive hours are being classified correctly, or else we're not going to have the right number of hours nurses and staff in the jails. So is there any question? There's one more that deals with staffing. It's pool nurses, and CCS currently is using two agency nurses. And according to the contract, the contract required that these agency nurses shouldn't be used more than 30 days. However, we found these two individuals appear to be being used more than 30 days. So I would say if the, if these nurses need to be used, there may need to be a modification eventually to the contract, because right now we're not in compliance. So I don't know if there's any questions on the staffing findings.
And again, management didn't disagree with any of your findings here?
No.
Okay.
The next one is a minor finding that had to do with the insurance coverage, what was, well, maybe wouldn't be minor, but was required in the contract, was and was on this insurance certificate, but that's been rectified.
Okay.
Now, we're going to get into some of the, these are the areas we haven't covered at the Audit Committee area, Audit Committee meeting yet. The first one has to do with the eight-hour health screenings. We were trying to determine if the vendor was in compliance with providing the inmate, when they come in, their health screening within the eight hours. And based on our review of some documentation that was provided to us, it appeared, we did a sample of 10 healthcare screens, we found that 40%, didn't appear they were getting their screening within the eight hours.
And six were not.
And six were. So what we recommended here, that the county implements some procedures, so that they're monitoring these eight-hour healthcare screens to ensure that the vendor is doing what they're supposed to, and the inmates are being screened when they need to. And I think we're in agreement with that one, yeah. The next one has to do with the mental health encounters were not being recorded timely. This has been rectified, but this had to do with the first year of, two years of the contract, is when they were having difficulties entering the mental health encounters into the wind system, which triggers the mental health reimbursement, but that's been corrected. Next one has to do with healthcare requests. An inmate can request a healthcare request, but they're supposed to give the healthcare request to a nurse. What we found during our review, that early-on healthcare requests on some occasions were being provided to sheriff deputies, so there's been new procedures put in place where healthcare requests are only to come to the nurses, but that may affect some of our results here. We looked at 70 sick call requests. We determined that of the 70, 41 were triaged within the required 24 hours. One, we weren't able to tell because there was no submission date. 12 and others, we couldn't tell because there were missing valid information. Nine were not received and triaged within the, were triaged within two to 28 days. So of the 79, were not triaged within the 24 days. So we recommended that the county implement procedures to monitor this process, ensuring that the healthcare requests are being addressed within the 24-hour timeframe. Next is lack of recording a real-time medication administration. This is one of the requests that came to us from Commission Counsel, if we could look at through the Chief Judge, was to determine whether medication was being distributed timely to the inmates. We went through a sample for our procedures, trying to determine this. We sat down, based on our sample, we walked through the electronic record management system. It appeared the medications were being administered when needed, either AM or PM. There was explanations for those occasions when a dose was missed, but what we weren't able to determine is how closely an AM was maybe to a PM, or how consistent they were receiving their medication, 8 o'clock every day. So we're recommending if the vendor could implement some more real-time administration of the medication into the actual record management system, so you know exactly when the dose was administered. Any questions? That's all of objective two, so is there any questions on any of them?
Thank you very much.
I know, I have more, but that just...
Yeah, yeah. Pardon me?
There's more, that was just objective two.
Yeah.
I wanted to see if there's questions. Move that.
So, on to the last section, then.
Yep. Okay. This one, I think, is the keyest item in the contract, and is what we looked at, is the key performance indicators. CCS and the county agreed to 23 key performance indicators, where CCS collects the data, then reports to the county whether they're hitting those key performance indicators, and when they're not hitting the key performance indicators, there could be penalties to the vendor. But what we found is CCS collects the data and self-reports, so they're assessing theirselves and reporting to the county. There's no independent verification whether these key performance indicators are actually being hit. And our recommendation was that the county needs to do, on a test basis, go through and actually validate those performance indicators. For example, if, say, if eight-hour health screening was one of the key performance indicators, we need to pull a sample of whatever CCS used to submit their data and ensure that their results are exactly what we would result, our results would be if we did it ourselves, testing it. And that's key, because I think those key performance indicators are the items that deal with the actual clinical services being provided to the inmates. So that's very key, that we have some monitoring of that. The next recommendation has to do with the proper monitoring of staff training. The contract required that CCS was to have an hour of training each month for a total of 12 hours a year. But what we found is in our analysis of training, while all the nurses may have had, or the professionals may have had their total 12 hours of training, they may not have had one hour every month. They may have, October had four training sessions. And what we also found, too, is that CCS doesn't report their training in hours, they report it in classes. So there needs to be some conversion of how much of a class equals into an hour, so determine if they're in compliance. The next one we looked at was addressing grievances. The grievances were categorized as medical service, mental health, and medication. In the report, we show over the three-year period, the number of grievances for each of the year, so you can see the grievances, I believe, have gone down. But we were trying to determine if the grievances were being addressed timely, and the inmate needs to have a written response back to them within 10 days. So we took a sample of 40 grievances, the 42 couldn't be located. 13 of the 40 had their written responses provided within the 10 days, but then there was 25 written responses that were not provided within 10 days. And those could be broken down into two areas. Five responses took over 100 days, and there was some responses that while the inmate may have left the facility, the response was inmate's no longer in the facility, so it really wasn't addressed. We believe that all grievances should have a written response, whether they're still in the facility or not, because you never know if they're going to come back to the facility, and that way you'd have a complete file for that inmate when they come back. So they need to do better monitoring of them, making sure the grievances go through the whole process and are addressed. And I believe, I know that was kind of quick, but that's all of our high-level findings and recommendations. As I indicated, we're going to go in a lot more detail tomorrow, so if anybody would like to come and see the whole.
9:00 AM, right here.
9:30.
And if you're not coming here, and you're not on audit, everybody has the audit report now to review. So again, thank you very much for that. I'll turn to you, Mr. Brooks. You have a PowerPoint, and if you want to then also make some comments on what counsel and the Auditor General had to say, and then we'll open it up for questions after that.
Sure. Actually, if possible, maybe I'll comment first on the auditor report out, recognizing that tomorrow morning, we'll be addressing in detail about the remaining half a dozen or so items that were mentioned. But overall, and to the Auditor General and her team, we had a very collaborative process over the last couple of months, so I think we've formed a good understanding. And I'd say that the department overall, you know, this is the old cliche of trust and verify, we have not done a good job with primary verification on both economic receipts, costs, as well as even some of the key process indicator, KPIs, as the auditor mentioned, with regards to primary source verification for random samples and so on. We've trusted the data as we've been given it, and that doesn't mean anything has been done inappropriately, but we can't verify it. So that's the systems and processes that we're going to put in place. I'll reference that a little bit in the, in the quick PowerPoint that I'm going to go through, if that's okay. And before maybe I get to the PowerPoint, let me take a second to introduce some people that are here. Besides a number of people from the Department here, many of which will be here for other items that are on your agenda today, so I'll let them introduce themselves when, when those items come up. I do want to introduce five leaders that are here today from WellPath. CCS, again, has renamed itself WellPath. We have Stephanie Powell-Badell, who is here. She's our onsite local health services administrator. So she runs the day-to-day at the Wayne County jails for WellPath, so she's all ours. Mark Morrissey is here. Mark's the regional director for Well, sorry, regional manager for WellPath, so he watches over our part of Michigan for WellPath. Remember, WellPath also provides services in McComb, Oakland, and other communities within the Michigan area. Audrey Townsend is here today. She's from Tennessee. She's the regional director for WellPath over this part of the country. So Audrey, welcome. And Audrey's relatively new in this role. She had been running the healthcare in the jails in Memphis, Tennessee, if I understand that right. Stan Wolford is here. Stan is the Executive Vice President for WellPath, so he watches over pretty much the whole country. And we recently had Audrey's job, so he was a little more focused on the Midwest or Central U.S., but now looks over the whole country. So congratulations, Stan, on your promotion. And then also joining us today, we're very lucky to have, Kip Hellman. Kip is the president of WellPath. So Kip, thank you for coming today. And at some point during the afternoon, I'm sure you'll have some questions that you'd like WellPath to directly respond to. But with that, I'd like to quickly go through the PowerPoint, and I will move fast, you have a copy of it, so I'll probably let you ask me questions later, including after today's meeting, if there's detail follow-up anybody wants, because I know time is of the essence, if that makes sense. So the PowerPoint in our quick review today is going to be in a format that's not uncommon to healthcare, called S-Bar, also comes out of the military, so Situation, Background, Assessment, and Recommendation. So our situation is that the WellPath contract was a two-year, nine-month contract, and is coming for expiration at the end of this month. It has built into it two options for one-year extensions. So today, I'm going to cut ahead to the recommendation, but then I'll come back to it later. Today, we are recommending that we exercise the first of those two extensions, so the first year, right? From a background viewpoint, I know we put a little bit of summary in here about background, because I know today, in fact, two of the four commissioners that are here, were not here at the time of this transition, so we wanted to make sure there was a quick understanding. In 2016, calendar year 2016, the Department and the county went through a process to really understand some of the challenges that were happening with healthcare in the jails. At that point, the county had, as it always had, self-operated healthcare and mental health at the jail. health at the jails. And there were some challenging performances. Went through a process to evaluate what its options were, then went through a process to do a RFP on a national basis, brought in options and then ended up choosing WellPath. Then it's called CCS, now called WellPath, through a competitive bid process. The focus at the time was to improve the quality and the service, predominantly through making sure staffing levels could get up to the level that were needed, but also putting in some core systems and processes. It was not about saving dollars. It was about performance. So if you look at the next slide, which is the chart, really quickly, this is just a quick way to kind of compare how the county was performing in the last couple of years of operation, 2015, 2016, and then since then, since January 1 of 2017, overall how WellPath, we believe, is performing and how the new model is working. I'll be going through each of these four sections, staffing quality, systems and processes and finances, again, in a second. But this is just kind of a summary chart. Staffing, you'll see, as we were transitioning out of being self operating, we had 76 FTEs, clinical staff members, running the county health at the jail. We are currently, the most recent month is at 97 clinical FTEs, or what's called productive FTEs. So great improvement. So we've, we've kind of had success with regards to that criteria, if you will, toward the improvement. You can see some of the other perspectives here, including that a number of the key provider staff positions now have been consistently filled. We were running at close to a 50% turnover rate. The last year, we were operating the county health at the jail. And the turnover rate right now in the rolling 12 months, the most recent 12 months, is down to 20%. So much better, stronger performance there. The county staff were represented at the time by two bargaining units. Those same two bargaining units are representing the staff now, with obviously, with WellPath now as the, as the management contractor. From a quality perspective, you know, it's even hard to speak about this because at the time, the county did not really have sophisticated clinical quality measurement and improvement tools in place. We had overall gestalt, if you will, of how we felt quality was, but we couldn't necessarily, statistically or data driven, be able to report that. Much different now under WellPath. We'll talk more about that in a minute. But now we have systems and processes and structures in place to have continuous quality improvement happen and reporting of it in objective ways. We now need to verify the objective data to the auditor's comments, but we at least now have that information. Again, systems and processes, we really kind of had a piecemeal together process for electronic medical records. So a combination of paper and electronics, which is almost a kiss of death. You almost want to be one or the other, but not trying to manage both at the same time. And that's the position that the county was in. We now have a comprehensive, state of the art electronic medical record system that actually gets data from outside sources, other hospitals and healthcare sources. So when an inmate's record is pulled up, if they've encountered healthcare outside in one of those participating health systems in southeast Michigan or in other parts of Michigan, that data is actually populated right into the electronic record, giving therefore a much more comprehensive clinical ability for the staff to, to be able to treat the patient. You can see some of the other comments here. And then finances, I'll come back to that in a second. But overall, we had gone through a period for finances under the county operation of continual cost cutting and continual budget cuttings. And where that unpacked service, no doubt, in every area, when you're doing that in healthcare, you create harm, right? I mean, not that you don't want harm to happen in other service and functional areas, but when you do in healthcare, and that created a lot of challenges. And I think what led everyone here at the time to think we needed someone whose core competency was to come in and do this. So with that, let me move on very quickly. On the staffing basis, again, has been commented, the contract calls for 103.6 productive clinically filled shifts, if you will, of FTEs. The most recent count we have, again, the data you had from the auditor was from 2017. So the most recent count we have, the July numbers are that they have 97 of those positions filled at the moment. So not quite at the 103, but, but well within a good standard of where we need to be. So again, our comments on the assessment side is they're doing a good job with overall having consistency in the staffing and being able to fill most positions. Again, their turnover rate is a very good standard, maybe even the benchmark for correctional healthcare. My background, as you'll recall, comes from large health systems and most hospitals around metro Detroit are happy with staffing turnover of somewhere around 12 or 13%. So to think of 20% in a correctional health facility, I think is a pretty good target and pretty good performance overall. You can see we've been making sure that all provider staff, professional staff are all licensed and 100% certified. WellPath also, by having other facilities in southeast Michigan, has a built in clinical staffing pool, an in-house pool, that they can pull from to fill shifts, not having always to rely on commercial nurse agencies and staffing agencies. Generally, that means you're going to have a higher, better quality of performance from those staff, because they're part of the team, even if they may be deployed to different locations. They're still part of the team culturally and training wise. They also have a career track and a training program that, again, I think has helped with the retention, because now staff have opportunities for both professional and even managerial and other growth. From a quality perspective, maybe the highlight of all this presentation is we were, there is an organization that accredits correctional jail healthcare. Again, in my, my past history, joint commission is what accredits hospitals. Many of you have heard about that organization before. Nonprofit organization that goes and accredits hospitals. There's a similar organization for, for jail health called the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. We were not even a position up until recently to be able to apply for accreditation. Since WellPath has taken over, they have applied for accreditation and we were successful in July after a May, I believe it was, site review by NCCHC, whatever it is, SCCC here, overall. And we were successful in getting an accreditation. We have a few items to verify for them to make it final, but overall, we received the accreditation. That's a great spot to be in and puts us really in the elite, if you will, of correctional jail healthcare in the country. Again, we now measure clinical performance and quality performance. We really didn't have those systems generally in place. We weren't resourcing those previously. Much more sophisticated system, much more transparent about our reporting of those. I won't necessarily share the detail that's below that, because I know we got to move on. But you can see in a few categories overall of how we're performing, with one, the most recent quarter being highlighted there. And you can see the fact that now we can even report how well we're performing is likely is ahead of where, better than where we were up a few years ago. From a systems and processes viewpoint, again, I mentioned the electronic medical record. Again, we have that now in place. We also have a much more automated and sophisticated pharmacy system. We were actually operating the pharmacies previously pretty much on a nine to five, Monday through Friday basis, under our watch, if that's fair. Now this is a 24/7 operation, so much better from a quality viewpoint and the ability to comply with clinical orders, as you can imagine. And again, as WellPath came in, they were asked to make sure they assessed and modernized furniture and clinical equipment. And you can see here a listing of a few of those items that happened under WellPath watch and their investment over the last couple of years. I say finance for last purposely. Again, we were not focusing on finances. We made this change, from what I understand. You can see here that we've consistently, through WellPath, operated jail health, both physical and mental health, pretty much at the same overall cost. But what's important to note here, but quality and service have dramatically improved. So from a value perspective, it's significantly improved. For the same investment, we're getting a much better delivery of service and product, if you will. So with that, again, just to wrap up, our recommendation is to exercise the first year of the two extensions that we have. We have our eyes wide open. Again, to the auditor's credit, you'll see that we have three major goals for this upcoming year with regards to this extension. The first of which is, we really need to put in better place, and we'll talk again about this tomorrow with the audit committee, as we did two weeks ago, better systems and controls and processes on the department side. This is not on WellPath. This is on us. We have not administered this contract toward its nature, which is a cost plus contract, right? It's, so therefore, we need to verify costs. We need to, again, look at primary random samples and things like that. So we're putting systems in place. Again, we've got a lot of guidance from the audit department as to how to properly do that, how to random sample and those types of things. And we're, we're putting all those tools in place. They'll be part of our corrective action plan for the audit. We also need to continue to work with WellPath on making sure that those key performance indicators are there. You saw the numbers earlier, and I mentioned them earlier. We're not at 100% on each and every one of them, and we shouldn't be satisfied till we are. I don't know if we'll ever get there, by the way. That's a different question. But I think we should be constantly focusing on it. And there are areas, some KPIs, key performance indicators, that are not at 90% or better. Most of them are, so they're hitting the thresholds for their contractual performance, but some of them are not at the level we need them to be. And we need to keep working on it from a continuous improvement perspective. Last and maybe not least, again, I mentioned staffing, I mentioned finances. We've performed stable financially, under budget, as Marcella mentioned earlier and Kamau can talk about as well. I think we need to be considering some of the savings that we have to budget toward reinvesting in additional clinical staff. I think we're light in a few areas right now, not necessarily due to WellPath's fault, they're fulfilling the contract. But I think things have changed, and I know there's a couple of areas that we probably need to look at, clinical staffing levels and consider potentially adding additional clinical staff to make sure we can get the throughput and the level of service that we need to out of that. But we'll be reviewing that over this next upcoming year. So with that, you know, I guess my overall summary would be, under the most recent couple of years under the county, I would label us as challenged in the sense of our performance. I think this first two years and nine months under WellPath CCS has been good, and now we need to get, you know, the old cliche of good to great. Now we need to move toward great. And that's what I think this extension opportunity is, both in the sense of the department's performance and how we manage WellPath, but actually holding WellPath's feet to the fire as well, to get the performance level that we can start labeling this as great. So with that.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
I think we'll take questions and comments.
Committee members, questions? We'll line them up. We have Commissioner Morecki first, then Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you. So who, I mean, you don't have to name the person, who's exactly going to look at this? I'm sure it's a time consuming job to make sure with these finances and the invoices and all that type of thing. And I guess originally, I was under the impression that corp counsel, someone in that group, was going to keep tabs on all this. Is it related to the contract? And, because if certain things weren't met, there were fines that were supposed to be initiated. So I mean, who, it's going to be someone from your department that does all this?
Yeah, the items that we need to look at and verify and ensure performance of really are not legal issues. They're either clinical data or operational data issues or financial issues. We've added in the budget process that you hopefully will be approving over the next week or so, we've added an additional position in the department to watch over specifically jail health. You're looking at our entire team at the moment of at least dedicated individuals, Dr. Keith, and that's, we did not adequately resource this. So we're adding a second position for Dr. Keith to supervise that will focus on the operational and clinical performance items. And then Kamau, in the M&amp;B area, is looking at adjusting his staffing to make sure on the expense side, more the economic side, that we're putting systems and tools in place to primarily verify random sample again, that information. We have been monitoring WellPath with regards to the key performance indicators. That's what triggers potentially pay at risk, or if you will, management fee at risk for WellPath, cost plus contract. Cost side is reimbursed, but then their management fee has a level of economic risk based on performance. They have been penalized, I think you verified that, Marcella, through the process appropriately based on performance indicators, most of which are at or above target, but a few have not always been. And in those cases, they have had monies deducted from their management fee. So that, I think we've done. And actually, it's a very good tool. You guys did a good job when you set that contract up to ensure that type of performance.
Okay, so I guess through the chair to Marcy, this obviously took you a long time. So what happens if all this is put into place, especially with invoices and all that? You will see the result of that and report to us like next year if this passes for another year?
What will happen is, once our audit report is accepted by the full board, we'll request a corrective action plan. By the responses that they provided to our recommendations, they've already had really the corrective action in place, but they'll formally provide that to us in a corrective action plan. We will go on and assess to ensure what they're indicating they're going to do and have done is actually taking place, and then we'll determine whether the recommendations have been addressed.
And that would be a report that we would get?
Yes. If it was another year extension, again. You would get our corrective action plan, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And Commissioner Morecki. We will also bring that corrective action plan to this committee, since we do have the oversight here. So it'll be both an audit, but for members of this committee, they'll also see what's in that corrective action plan.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So basically, Commissioner Morecki kind of asked the questions of oversight. That's the main thing we need right now is oversight. But also, the electronic medical record system, was that also implemented for juvenile detention, the juvenile detention facility?
Yeah, Keith Dugokensky, Correctional Healthcare Administrator, Commissioner, and through the chair. That is correct. Two components of the juvenile detention facility have been receiving support or facilitation from WellPath. One has been the implantation of an electronic medical record, a component of that which monitors offsite visits for the juveniles and the medication orders that are prescribed by the providers at the JDF. So those are two components of the electronic medical record that JDF is using. They are not using the entire application, but just those two components of the electronic medical record.
Okay. And also, the, through the chair to Marcy, the documents, the supporting documents that you cited, were there any certain types of supporting documents that you were looking for? I mean, have you outlined exactly what that looks like for them?
We haven't outlined exactly what we're looking for, but what they would need to do is, because right now, all you see is a one page invoice, so this is what your actual cost was. You need to take like your pharmacy costs, your wages, and have something that you can go back to, some type of supporting documentation for wages, could be a payroll register, to ensure that what we're being billed for staffing reconciles to the payroll registers. Pharmacy could be some type of invoices or invoice run reports that shows that these are the pharmaceutical supplies that came to the Wayne County jail that are billed. So something that they have some type of level of assurance for whatever we're paying for is the services we're actually receiving. Right now, there's actually nothing.
Wow, okay. All right. Thank you.
Can Kamau also respond to that, please?
Please. Yeah, he kind of signaled me that he had a, Mr. Caprue?
Yes, we already started the process, like for example, in your OAG report, I don't know what page, but it talked about the startup costs, and the OAG office picked a couple of items. We did contact WellPath, and I walked through the process, and we did receive all those receipts, just to verify. But we wanted to use that as a practice session. So now I've worked out with their finance person on a quarterly basis to continue this process. What we just have to figure out, because the accounting system wasn't set up for this type of process, we're going to pick about 10% on a monthly or on a quarterly basis, randomly, and then submit that information to them, and then they have a turnaround time to get it back to us. But again, we started the process and we just tested the process by using the startup costs, and it came back quite well.
And what you just described, we will also see in the corrective action plan.
It's already there, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Final, I guess, question, statement. So CCS, well, I guess it's WellPath now, right? Is that correct or vice versa?
WellPath is their new name.
Name, okay. If we didn't approve the one year extension, do we have any other alternatives? I mean.
Day to day management?
I don't know what that would look like.
I think it's fair to say there really is not a Plan B. I mean, on October 1, we would have to hire 120 nurses and doctors and other support professional, to be ready by October 1 of this year, so three weeks from now or four weeks from now. So there really is not a practical option, for my view.
really is not a practical option, for my viewpoint. You'll obviously have to make your determinations.
All right, thank you.
But that does mean that there, we're looking a year from now at the second one-year option. Today, you're just recommending the one, you're not recommending both.
That is correct.
Yeah. Commissioner Morecki?
That brings me to the question then. I mean, we have to do this by next voting meeting, correct? Because it's October for...
Oh, the full board, correct.
Yeah, full board. We called it voting meeting at City Council. So why is this coming to us at the last minute like this? Is it, was it with auditor, or?
You know, I'll let staff maybe respond to that. We did submit this for commission approval, I believe it went into your queue sometime in mid-July.
It did, okay.
Through the chair, so the decision was made to hold this contract until the audit was complete, so that commissioners will have an opportunity to hear the audit findings before you voted on the extension.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Dobbs, you had...
Yes, thank you. In our packet here, we, there's a question about lawsuits filed over medical care provided since January 1, 2017, in the Wayne County jails, and the answer is that there's only one lawsuit filed. I just wanted to verify that that was correct. And then, do you have any information on maybe how many lawsuits had been filed over medical care in prior years?
Yeah, I'll speak to the, since CCS now WellPath took over, there has been only one lawsuit filed, and it was dismissed. Now, prior to that, I don't know if Dr. Keith or Linda can talk, I am sure we unfortunately had more than one lawsuit filed at any point in time, but I'll let you...
My knowledge, there are no lawsuits that have been filed since January 1, 2017. I don't know what the response is where you have one that was filed.
Yeah. No, I think there has, there has been one filed, Linda, but it was dismissed.
The county was not reserved without lawsuits.
Right, yeah. Well, WellPath was served. The county was not named in that lawsuit.
Name and title for the record, please.
Linda Pendy, it's a corporation council.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any information on maybe the number of lawsuits in 2016 or 2015?
Not readily available.
If you could submit that to...
Lawsuits, 2016, 2015?
Yeah.
I don't know how difficult it is to do a search. It sounds like hitting a couple of buttons to me. So if you want to go back the five-year period prior to WellPath coming, and just submit that to committee staff, if you would.
Just for clarification, you are asking only for raw number of lawsuits filed, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, we might have more questions after that, but for now, that's the question.
And you might have the canned response, depending on where they're at in litigation.
Well, that would be...
Thank you.
That would be unusual.
This is Dr. Dugokensky again, and just for purpose of clarification, there's a lot of lawsuits that get filed that are related to jail business overall. If you're asking commissioners specifically about jail health, then I think that that would be a narrower search, so...
Dr. Dugokensky, we will look at that before we respond.
Anything that would fall into the area that WellPath now has the responsibility for?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Dobbs? Counsel, if you wouldn't stray too far, I've been curious about this right from the beginning. When you have a contract with a company, and then that company is sold, bought out, or whatever, the question of the assignment of the contract to the new entity, what is corporation council's, and then that usually has to be approved by a board to assign that contract to a new entity. So what's corporation council's view as to whether there is an assignment issue here?
I will have to speak to my colleague who did work with WellPath's attorney as far as if there was any corporate change that would require an assignment under this contract. To my knowledge, that there was not, which typically would happen if there was some board action that required on WellPath a change in EIN numbers, but I think Jane Enright did.
Well, I've had this rear its head on other boards that I've sat on, where a company is bought by another company, and then the question becomes that the board, because the contract that the commission approved is with CCS, and now we have WellPath there. So, and we don't have to do it today, but I'd like to see corporation council's opinion on assignment, because now we're doing business with WellPath. I don't know all the details of all of that, but it just raised an assignment question for me that I didn't see addressed. Commission Counsel, you have a...
Through the chair, so I did communicate and ask those questions of corporation council. We did receive some information back and were advised that there was simply a name change, and there was no assignment, and they provided the backup documentation indicating and showing from the state of Delaware where the name was simply changed and there was no assignment. So we did have that conversation and make those inquiries of the department.
Well, I'll get into that a little bit more, but I thought what the situation is, is we had one company buy another company.
From my understanding, they joined?
Yeah, there was some merger that went on with another company?
Our content...
No?
We may want to ask somebody from WellPath here, but, but our contract was with CCS. That entity still exists. It's, its ID number never changed, it simply had a name change. But I would suggest you have represented...
See, I thought it was a lot more than a name change, because the way this originally came to me is now they've been bought out. So I went, please, if you would like to join us?
You should...
Come on up, name and title for the record, and...
Hit the little button.
Hit it just kind of lightly once, or it's kind of like, yeah?
Look at that, technology.
You're qualified to be a CEO, I think.
I was one. So Kip Holman, I am president of WellPath. And so, so in October, October 1 of last year, CCS and the company that I was CEO of, called Correctional Medical Group Companies, we combined under a common ownership. So essentially, both corporate entities still exist. They both were renamed WellPath, just for, you know, branding's sake, but, but the entities are still the entities. CCS, now named WellPath, continues. The company that I ran still continues as a separate corporation, and, but our, you know, we bought together common ownership of both sets of companies, but yeah.
Okay, well, like I said, that was a question that occurred to me. It's like, quit sending them checks. They're different. We don't contract with these people. We contracted with CCS.
Yeah, and, and we have, we have many states where corporations are prohibited from practicing medicine, and only medical groups practice medicine, California being an example. And in those states, we still conduct business under those medical groups. So we have multiple entities.
Well, and I appreciate you being here today and at the table. I have one other question. I think it's good that you came up for this one. Going back in time here, in the original discussion that the commission had in awarding a contract to CCS, in that due diligence period, the commission became aware that there were some discussions that went on with our bargaining units, and that there was some sort of a tentative agreement to say, if this does go through, there'd be like a 50 cent an hour, I believe, bump in the wages for representative. There was a, there was a temporary, I'm not, I'm not saying that right, it's not a temporary agreement.
There was a retention bonus put in play, is that correct? Somebody who was here at the time, want to speak to it, as opposed to me?
There was a temporary agreement in place while CCS negotiated their unions with our existing...
So, did the, did that 50 cent happen? And the other question I have too, as you took over on 1-1, 2017, what was the date that you came to an agreement with both GAA and AFSMI? When did those, when did you come to agreement? What was the date that those contracts became effective?
I don't know if I can look historically, or they can check back at theirs, because it would be their union that recognized under CCS.
Correct.
Yeah, again, Keith Dugokensky, Mr. Chair Colleen, the unions were recognized right at the outset of...
Correct, that was part of it.
Right, so they were recognized on 1-1, 2017, when CCS picked up the contract.
But were the provisions of a labor agreement in place on 1-1?
Yes, they were, to my knowledge, and with regard to compensation specifically, the one condition that I am aware of is that former Wayne County employees were to receive a transition bonus of $5,000 at the day 30 of their tenure with then CCS, and then another $5,000, I believe, either at the ninth month or sixth month of their tenure, and both of those conditions were met, and all employees received those bonuses that were negotiated.
Okay, and you can verify that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, those did occur.
Okay, because we have great concern as we do more offloading, either to for-profits or kind of the authoritization of government, that's picked up a lot of steam here lately, that it's a great concern that the folks that work for us were taken care of.
It may be, Mr. Chair, that the OAG did take a look at that.
Yep, it was calling right over there, I see that...
To that point, yes, that was part of our procedures when verified that those employees did receive their bonuses.
Excellent, okay. Okay, I'm out of questions. Any other questions from committee members? What's the pleasure of the committee with the item before us today?
Approveable. On support.
It's been moved and supported. A pause for any additional questions. Somebody may have neglected to ask before we move to a vote. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? All righty, thank you very much. And I would like to comment, Mr. Brooks, that you've mentioned the good relationship with the OAG in working through this. Government works best when everybody stays in their lane and does their job. Our job here is oversight, so, and we will do our job here. So when the corrective action plan comes out and continue, and then hopefully, given the goals that you stated, that it wasn't monetary, it was quality of services there, and it is the intention of the chair of this committee to help you get from good to great on this, but that's, that's through our job and oversight.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
If I could, sir, just thank you. We have a whole team here from WellPath, three of which were from out of town, so they, that's how important this is to WellPath. So let's thank them for, for coming here today.
All right, before we go, I got my clerk saying something.
Oh.
I can't hear you, man. Yeah, okay, just so you know, no, it's unrelated. Thank you very much for everybody being here. Thank you. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the exciting. I know committee meetings are just your thing. So, Mr. Clerk, what are we doing next?
So...
Item two is...
Budget adjustments.
Can I get a motion to pass for the day on that?
We'll just put it on the next agenda. You don't need a motion.
Well, we do. All right, we're ignoring it. We don't need a motion. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Next item on the addenda, item D3, approval of modification, number one, to a contract with a one-year option to renew.
Okay, this is a youth assistance program. Have you collated the numbers that, which items are youth, three through nine?
18.
And 18?
That's correct.
So Ms. Coleman, instead of going through each one of these individually, let me start out with some generalities. Is there any significant difference in any of these contracts? Would you then please name and title for the record, and will you please then just give a brief but a more broad view of what the youth assistance program is, what the goal of that is, what we know about the success of it that brings us to the renewals today?
Absolutely. Shanetta Coleman, Division Director for Health, Human and Veteran Services? I'm with you. I'm still learning the new...
I know, I know.
The youth assistance program is one of our prevention programs. These are young people who have been brought before the attention of the court, and the goal, obviously, is to keep them from penetrating the juvenile justice system further, where they become adjudicated and require an out-of-home placement. So these are services that are provided that can run the gamut, from conflict resolution to some counseling services and some assessments that may occur to ensure that we're able to provide sufficient services to the young people who are participating in them. The, a lot of the youth assistance programs, we've talked to you before about even some of our diversion services, they also, in some cases, some of the providers may also be providers of diversion as well. But they, again, are prevention-related services for approximately 1,000 kids annually, and the outcomes or the success rate, as you just mentioned, is about 80%. We have about a 20% rate of young people who may end up being escalated into some type of probation level, but primarily, it's successfully run. All five of our care management organizations are providers, and then we have other providers who are a part of the Wayne County community, who are nonprofit organizations.
So everybody before us today is, these are contracts to take a one-year option to renew?
That would be correct.
And we have, is that the last one-year option on these contracts?
No.
There's another?
I believe there's one more one-year, no, this is it? This is the last one, yes.
This is the last one, so you are going to go through, and first of all, it was an RFP process to get us to this point.
Yes, sir.
Are we RFPing now, starting in four or five months here, or whatever?
We will be doing an RFP for these prevention services also. I do want to add that we do have one provider who has opted not to be a provider, so that you won't see before you a modification to extend, I believe it is Star Commonwealth. They, they chose not to be renewed, so at the end of their contract period, they'll commence their services.
And as part of your RFP process, do you look geographically across the county for locating these services?
Well, we've asked for, yes. So we want to cover every corner of the county, and then respondents are able to share with us what their service or catchment areas that they can serve. We also have, for the providers, they generally identify all of the service, services in their menu, as well as the zip codes that they actually support. As you are aware, generally, what we like to have happen is for services not to be so far away from a youth's home that they cannot be successful in their participation. So we do identify zip codes.
And the last one I'll ask, and open it up to my colleagues, the various district courts around the county, would those judges be recommending people for youth assistance? Is that one way in which kids would be assigned, for lack of a better word?
No, not, no, we don't...
Because what I'm, what I'm trolling here for is, who can commissioners in their corner of the county talk to, to say, hey, what's your interaction with YAP programs? How do you think they're working? What is it doing for our kids? Where can those kind of questions be asked locally?
Well, what I would recommend, and we'll be more than happy to share, we have a category of providers with zip codes assigned to them. Now, what's good about these prevention program services, the YAPs as well as the first contacts, is that these are referrals that can come from the community, a parent, a guardian, a school, a police agency, so it doesn't have to come directly from a district court, and so referrals can be made. So you would just, you know, you can utilize the service list, and if kids actually meet certain criteria for prevention, then they'll try and work with the, with that family to get the kids into care.
Thank you. I'll step back here. Questions from committee members? Commissioner Morecki?
Thank you. Are there, there's more than this, right? Are there more coming to us?
I believe you have, there should be two agendas. Is one more? The Conference of Western Wayne?
I was going to say, yeah, someone's missing here. Okay, all right.
Yes, someone's missing. We just have some information that we're waiting to get back from there.
All right, I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Thank you. The schools in the, well, whatever area that these individual organizations work from, are they directly involved in making sure that schools in the, in the district... are they directly involved in making sure that schools in the, in the district or in that area have this information and work with them directly?
We have had very good relationships with, working with schools and other community organizations when they identify young people who would benefit from these types of services. So we've had a really good relationship with them, and so, yes, they're aware.
So what does that look like, though, when you say a good relationship? Is it, do you, do they have quarterly meetings with the schools, or what does that look like to make sure that, you know, the dots are connected?
Yep. So generally, the service provider will do outreach to the schools in their catchment areas, if you will, and they really just try to introduce themselves, let people know that they're available, the type of services that they render, and again, there's a referral form that they can leave with the schools, contact information that is provided to the schools, churches as well, and then the people will contact the provider agency.
Okay.
And sometimes, kids just, you know, some of these agencies provide other services as well, and kids may utilize those services in the community, and if they can see where there may be a greater benefit for them being in something that's a lot more structured, then they also can do a self-generated referral. All of this, of course, is voluntary, and it has to be consented by an adult, and it also has to have the blessing of the Third Circuit Court.
Okay. And I ask because I know sometime the agencies can reach out to the schools and then, you know, after a while, you know, they kind of fall to the wayside, and if, you know, I think if, if the parents would know more as well about these programs, then they may be able to reach out for help. And so when you have an agency that talks to the school, I think it needs to be more of an ongoing involvement, and I'm not sure, again, what that looks like for each agency, but just a, just a thought. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to follow up on that, when you say schools, let's take a public school system. Are you really dealing more with the principals in a school, or like a central administration for the entire district?
Generally, the social worker in the school.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So if you know a social worker in your local school, you can go ask them.
Yeah.
But have you had any assessment really for like, how well-known this is to parents, or is it something like the social worker in the school, something pops up and they go, hey, we got this program?
We have not done what I'm gonna call an official assessment of how much the community knows about these programs. So I wouldn't want to mislead you and say that, that that's true, but what we do have is, we know how many kids are referred into the program, and we can pretty much tell where those referrals come from. So it is a program where we have a lot of foot traffic, so they, they know it's out there.
Okay. Question from committee members. What's the pleasure of the committee? We would be looking for a motion for items three through nine and item eighteen.
Motion for approval?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Hearing no more questions, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Are there any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, if you can follow that bouncing ball, I'm guessing we're on ten?
That's correct.
Oh.
Approval of modification number one to a three-year revenue agreement with two one-year options to renew with the County of Monroe.
Okay, this has to do with the, the MEO's office, the Medical Examiner's Office. Name and titles for the record, and what do we got?
Brian Manning, Deputy Director, HHVS.
Nellie Lee, Policy and Compliance Director, HHVS.
Okay, while I'm thinking about it, HHVS, I'm trying to switch over to that, please quit sending any paperwork to this floor that's Health, Veterans, and Community Wellness, now that we have all these names floating around?
We have updated our letterhead.
We'll have a discussion in the alley out behind the Guardian Building later, but that was brought to my attention, and just one less thing for mass confusion. Okay, let's get on with the business.
Before us, the memorandum of understanding with the County of Monroe, we are simultaneously exercising two one-year options for an additional two years, and we conduct on behalf, through the partnership of the University of Michigan Medical School, autopsies and related forensic medicine services on behalf of the County of Monroe, and we do this basically on a fee basis, and you have this committed to memory, Nellie.
Yes, it's a fee-for-service basis, as well as transportation and storage fees.
Okay. Sounds good. Questions from committee members?
Motion for approval?
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions from committee members? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Are there any abstentions? If I'm doing this right, we're on item eleven? No. We did item eleven as the first item, correct?
Yes.
So where are we, Mr. Clerk?
We are on item twelve. Approval of amendment number three to a grant award with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services.
I feel like Johnny Carson here, we've, we've made it to the final addenda for the day. Okay. Okay, to fund and operate our FQHC, or both of them, in Hamtramck and Wayne, so, please, Mr. Manning? You're already sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the main grant for the FQHCs, meaning, you know, grant that we have had in somewhat significantly longstanding now since 2013 with HERZA, to operate the clinics in Hamtramck and at the Health Administration Building in Wayne.
Does this grant ever run out from the feds? You know, it's a, it's a federally qualified clinic. My understanding is, is the feds say, hey, we'll help you get up and off the ground and get you to a patient base that you won't need grants from us anymore? Do I have that right?
We're in the midst, is this the second year of the three-year cycle? I believe we are funded through a multi-year award through fiscal twenty, federal grant year 2020, so I believe this is the second in the third year. Do they run out? The, you know, the quality of our subsequent reapplications will dictate, you know, the federal funders' willingness to refund. You know, and our past applications have been received pretty favorably and scored, you know, quite highly.
But the answer is yes, it could.
It could.
And then that somewhat depends on political appointees and Washington and the view they take of these things. You don't have to respond to that, but that's, that's a reality here.
It's.
So, okay.
Questionary.
Right, so, so far, so good, as far as that. Questions from committee members on this? Commissioner Morecki?
I'm wondering what the, what the attendance rate is at these. Are they highly used, or is there?
I'll take a swing at that.
And do you send these numbers in, into the feds? I'm just wondering what.
Yeah.
Capacity and what the use is to these?
Dave Brooks, Director of the Department, again. Yes, we send all the information into the feds, they do an annual audit, actually, process that we comply with, so they get all financial and statistical and actually clinical information as well. Specific to the number, we can get you the numbers, I think we presented it once before, even since I've been here, we can get you that. It is a little bit, I'll tell you, it's a little tale of two cities. Hamtramck, we have a large volume of medical patients and behavioral health patients at Hamtramck. That clinic's doing very well, it needs to continue to ramp up, there's always room for growth, but it's doing real well.
That's where the dental is gonna be.
No, that's, that's the other city. In Wayne, although we do have medical care available, we are still ramping that up. We haven't done as good of a job there getting it up to capacity. But Wayne has the dental clinic, which is very busy right now, and in fact, we're hoping at some point to add a dental clinic with some support from University of Detroit Mercy to the Hamtramck clinic. It's not there now, and we'll bring that information forward when, when that's available to us. So Wayne is a very busy clinic, but it's predominantly dental with a little bit of medical and behavioral care. Hamtramck exclusively medical and behavioral is very busy overall. But I can get you the statistics that back up my qualitative comment.
No, that's okay. I'm just wondering if, if it's not to full capacity, when this is looked at in a couple of years, will that, will those numbers affect our monies that we, could they adjust their numbers to our?
Yes. The answer is yes, it is a process, as Brian mentioned, a little bit competitive, and as the Chair mentioned, they want to see continuous improvement. They do not necessarily look, although change in administration can affect that, but over the last twenty or twenty-five years of this program, they really never look for you to necessarily get off of some level of federal support. Remember, federally qualified health centers, FQHCs, exist as the real safety net. They're there to take any patient regardless of ability to pay, so not just Medicaid and Medicare, who are usually under-reimbursed patients from a provider viewpoint, they'll take any charity care, no-pay patient as well. So the feds, I think, understand there's always going to be some level of support, they just want to see continuous improvement, both on quality but also volumes, that you're using the, the resources appropriately. We also, now with that, again, I mentioned, we have capacity at both locations, more so again at Wayne, but also at Hamtramck. Not that it's not busy, but it could be busier, and we could look to expand hours and so on. Our new Communications Director, who I think we exhausted at some point, so he's either taking a nap or he's left for the day or something, I don't know, but Mike McElrath, who joined us about a month ago, one of his top priorities, in addition actually to the developing a veterans outreach and growth and development plan, that's his other priority, is to actually work with the leadership of the FQHCs, federally qualified health centers, to develop a growth and development plan, a marketing plan, because I think right now we have two unappreciated wonderful resources in Wayne and Hamtramck that a lot of people in the community aren't aware of, that it's available for them, and if they have no ability to pay, we still welcome them.
Okay, thank you.
And when I saw this item come through, it reminded me, I think we do need to have a little bit of a discussion item. Our staff can look at the, the reports that go to the feds to look at utilization issues, and so that we as a committee stay on top of that.
Be great.
Because we hear about that. And by the way, you stole an employee out of the Mental Health Authority, Michael?
Oh, yeah, Mike McElrath, who is our Communications Director.
And brought him over here.
Was recruited away from the Detroit Wayne Mental Health Authority.
You sure did.
And I believe has a new name.
Yes, and I don't know what the heck that name is either.
Well, after you get our name right, you can work.
Yeah, we're doing something about integrated care now.
Our old name's available.
I think I went, I think it's something like D-Win Integrated Network or something like that. We kind of pegged off on calling it D-Win.
D-Win.
Yeah, kind of anyway, but yeah, we're going through that ourselves. Okay, so the item before us is a revenue, well, is the, yeah, the revenue coming from the feds to support the Wayne and Hamtramck FQHCs, and we will have an agenda item in the near future to look at the data more. Commissioner Dobbs?
Can we move for approval?
That's what I was calling on you. I thought you had that. I'm ready to make a motion look. Commissioner Dobbs moves, and I heard Commissioner Baker McCormick's support. Any additional questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All righty, where are we at there, Mr. Clerk?
Item thirteen, approval of modification number two to an intergovernmental agreement with a one-year option to renew with the Downriver Community Conference.
Now, that's for a wi, no.
Yeah.
No, no, we did thirteen.
We did.
I, I think we have to, I think the motion had.
No, we actually didn't. We did three through nine and eighteen.
Correct, but, but, with our crack staff.
Yeah.
The official motion had items three through nine and eighteen, and it should have included thirteen.
Okay.
Are there any other?
This is a little different.
I'm sorry?
I think this is a little different.
And that's why you didn't include it? So we're gonna talk once again to Mr. Manning, and this is not exactly the same as the other Yaps, is that correct? Because it is the Downriver Conference?
Yeah, it, it's not exactly the same, and Dr. Coleman can, feel free to rejoin me. The conferences are umbrella providers, they're, they're working with underlying nonprofit organizations, so that is a bit of a twist, and they also have kind of some special designation under the One-Tenth Millage as well, so.
What is, what is that, special designation?
There's a certain amount of the funding that it was.
Oh, that was set aside for this, that's specifically set.
So they've been historically involved in this since my first tour of duty with Wayne County in the nineties.
Okay, so there is specifically money set aside for the Downriver Conference?
That's the legacy understanding I have.
And then, do they do an RFP process, and how do they select who they're gonna work with?
Dr. Coleman. Shanetta Coleman, Division Director. As Mr. Manning mentioned, there were three conferences historically where there was One-Tenth Mill that was a set aside, I guess, for them.
The Downriver, the Western Wayne.
And then there used to be one that was Eastern.
And then the mysterious, I'm still trying to locate them, Conference of Eastern Wayne?
They, to my understanding, this predates.
Every once in a while, a suit shows up that has a law degree about every five years and says, yep, I'm the Conference of Eastern Wayne.
Yeah.
And I'm always running out into the hallway after him, hey, you, come back! What, so I have no idea what's going on with the Conference of Eastern Wayne. But go ahead.
But to Mr. Manning's point, this actually historically predates this administration, but these conferences were already set up, and they had this One-Tenth Mill, and they would do prevention services, and it would, in many instances, align with some of the youth assistance services. So I think right now, we only have the Downriver, and then the Conference of Western Wayne, the Eastern Wayne Conference no longer participates, and they haven't participated, if my memory serves me correctly, in probably the last four or five years. So I haven't met the suit.
But we take that into consideration, where we look at the geography of all of the providers out there.
Yes.
Okay.
And to that point, in the case of the Conference of Eastern Wayne, Black Family Development had about fifteen to twenty percent of the kids, this is back when we were kind of looking at this for the HUD award, that were kids enrolled from the Points and Harper Woods and the Youth Assistance Program. So it's kind of morphed into a more organic, I don't know, structure over the years, but in the case of the conferences, they, you know, if you look at the underlying agencies here, like Beaumont Teen, City of Wyandotte, Guidance Center, I mean, these have been agencies that have been involved in this sphere of activity for decades and kind of continue so, so.
Okay. Counsel, do you have something on this?
Yeah, point of clarification, if it's okay. So when you said that it was a set aside for the conferences, you don't mean in the millage itself, you're saying some internal county determinate? Because I recall, I just don't recall seeing a specific entity mentioned in the millage, so I could go pull it out and confirm, but.
I don't believe in the millage itself.
Okay, so it's a county determination that there's a set, so I think that's the distinction to be made, the county made a determination to set aside a certain amount of money for the conferences versus a required legal necessity, I guess I'll say.
Yeah. Counsel, I can probably assure you that there was absolutely no political considerations in that decision.
I can attest to that.
So for the Yap dollars for the Conference of Western, or is this Downriver?
This, this is Downriver.
Downriver, for the, for the Downriver Conference?
Mm-hmm.
Pleasure of the committee? Commissioner Morecki?
Actually, our analysis says it's a One-Tenth Millage.
Yes.
It is a millage.
Oh, okay.
But the One-Tenth Millage pays for everything, and then there's a separate, if you could dig that out, a separate agreement that's saying, out of that One-Tenth Millage, so much is gonna go to Conference Eastern, Western, and Downriver?
Yeah.
If you could pull that out, just to send it to us for a clarification?
Yeah.
But I don't, it doesn't go on the ballot that way.
Right, no, we're giving them.
Because it would have to be named on the ballot if that was the case.
I'll move a, do we have a purple? I'll move, do we have approval?
Hey, we have a motion. Anybody support it? Oh, we got support too. We're on a roll. Any further questions on item 13? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Clerk?
Next, item 14, approval of a three-year use and occupancy agreement with a two-year renewal option with Sumter Township.
All right, so we are, we have a location down in Sumter Township that we rent in order to distribute WIC, and that's item 14. Item 18?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Item 16 is with the Guidance Center in Southgate for them to be able to distribute the WIC program, and we, we rent spaces at both of them. Name and title for the record?
Hi, Carol Osterberry, Health Officer, Health, Human, and Veteran Services.
Okay. We have more locations than this, correct?
That is correct.
Are we going to be seeing them, are their contracts up? Are we going to be seeing them in the next month or so, or...
I think there's another couple that are up, but, you know, I mean, like, we also serve, we have WIC client clinics where we, like, the main health department, I don't have, we don't have a contract.
Say that again?
At the main health department, we provide WIC clinics or WIC services and, you know, right.
Three-year-old locations, yes.
That's my point being, yeah, we don't have contracts with every location.
Who do we, who else besides, because this is Sumter and with the Guidance Center down in Southgate, other than where the county distributes it from, do we have other?
Right. Inkster and Lincoln Park are offices that are through Western Wayne Family Healthcare Center. That's an FQHC.
Oh, we did the Cal DM Community.
But those aren't use and occupancy agreements.
Okay. So questions on these two items, 14 and 16? Yeah, I got it right. Any questions on these two? Pleasure of the committee.
Move approval?
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve items 14 and 16 for WIC distribution. Hearing no more questions, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, where does that leave us, Mr. Clerk?
Item 15, approval of modification number one to three-year sole-source contract with a two-one-year option to renew with Quincy Technologies Solutions Inc.
Okay, this is a, another medical examiner. This was a sole-source contract, and it was described through your contract with two one-year options. What's the modification here that we're trying to do?
Nella Lee Policy and Compliance for HHVS.
If you'd pull that, Michael, just a bit closer, thank you.
Yes, this is a three-year contract with two one-year modifications. This modification seeks to renew both one-year renewals simultaneously.
So the modification of the contract is we want to change it from two one-year to one two-year?
And also the exercise, the two-year.
Well, that, an exercise, that two-year.
Yes.
Counsel, any issue with us doing that? The reason?
Quincy Technologies has been in place as a case manager software for years with the Medical Examiner Office. They are sole-source, they are, they are the sole developer and support, so we didn't see an administrative, or we wanted to relieve the administrative burden and just extend it for one time.
So why go through the charade?
Absolutely.
Okay. Questions from committee members?
Move it. Not support.
We have a motion in support. Any additional questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? All righty, thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Item 17, approval of amendment number three to a one-year grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
So this is our comprehensive planning, budgeting, and some other C.
Right, the CPBC.
Yeah, so the state of Michigan, I forget, it's like 13 or 14 million dollars a year they ship us to run programs on behalf of the state, and they pay us to do it. And then there's regular modifications throughout the year where they go, hey, we got extra money, we're sending it to you. So what's this one, Ms. Osterberry?
Right, that's, pretty much you summed it up.
But in what area?
I would need, I'm sorry. I think, I know it was Emergency Preparedness, what else?
County Health Officer.
Yeah. I think hep, was hep A on there? Oh, gravy. Yeah, Emergency Preparedness, Healthy Families America, looks like childhood-led. Oh, yeah. I know it wasn't all of these programs, okay, so...
Yeah, I see there's some breastfeeding dollars. That's always a good thing.
Right. Yes.
Okay.
I apologize, this has been...
Could you send something over on, there was a name in here that I saw that was like, what the heck is that? The Healthy Family thing?
Yes, Healthy Families America.
Healthy Family America. Don't have to go into it now. If you send a little thing over what that is and...
Sure.
What it's trying to accomplish. Okay. Questions from committee members? Commissioner Baker McCormick?
What is the, what is it, vector-born surveillance?
Yes, we do mosquito and any other vectors. It's mostly mosquitoes, where we collect mosquitoes and we test them and then report back to the state, and that's for West Nile virus and for Zika.
Seeing any West Nile this year?
See, zero.
Right.
I thought I heard, yeah, I thought I heard that they, there was one or two up in Oakland County, maybe, but none in Wayne this year, huh? Okay, pleasure of the committee. We have a motion in support to accept this money from the state of Michigan. Any additional questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Rocking on unanimity today. Mr. Clerk?
Next, item 19, discussion regarding a five-year memorandum of understanding with the Wayne County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, this, yeah. Right, right. This is, it went for approval to public safety, I believe, but because it was, okay. Hang on while we get our story straightened. You got a microphone? You got a microphone? Where's, didn't it go to public safety for approval?
It is going for approval tomorrow.
Okay, it's going to public safety. They're actually going to approve it, but when this was brought to my attention, because there's HH and a couple of other letters in the new, it involved a grant and moving some dollars around, I suggested that, that we just have a brief discussion about it here. So it's a white, at the, the MOU itself, and then I'm frantically searching for what I asked fiscal to do, and fiscal actually handed it to me. Oh, there it is. Thank you. So, okay, a brief description of this MOU and the source of the dollars and how we're changing the dollars around, what's going on here?
This is, I just really quickly...
Good afternoon, Drew DeCher, Eddy McCann Administrator for Health, Human, Veteran's Services for Adult Community Corrections.
You're going to get a check this week for doing that.
The MOU that is before you today is for the services that are rendered by the Wayne County Sheriff's Office. The Wayne County Sheriff is responsible for providing apprehension services, tether services, as well as...
Drunk driver jail reduction, five-day housing for offenders that meet the qualifications that has been made readily, readily available, excuse me, through our comprehensive plans and act, contract that goes before commission annually.
So we do this annually?
That is correct.
This MOU?
The MOU, I was able to identify that an MOU was implemented in 2012, the onset that, excuse me, MOU initiated on October 1st, 2012 through September 30th, 2015. The second MOU was implemented in October 1st, 2015 through September 30th, 2019. This is a renewal, for lack of better terms, of the MOU to provide the services that the Wayne County Sheriff's Office has provided since 2012, and I actually believe they've provided the services since then, prior to then, excuse me.
Because what caught my ear on this is we, we have grant dollars for community correction?
Community corrections is 100% grant-funded through the Michigan Department of Corrections Office of Community Corrections.
And so we're using those grant dollars to basically support the sheriff's operations? Because they're, the sheriff's legally obligated to do these things.
Each year in our comprehensive plans and services application that is submitted to the Michigan Department of Correction, we provide program descriptions for services that will be rendered or benefited by individuals that fall under the PA 511 criteria. For adult fugitive apprehension, we apprehend offenders that have been sentenced to participate in those specialty courts that derived out of the Third Circuit Court, Mental Health Court, Drug Court, Veterans Court, and Swift and Sure sanctions program, as well as we have the capability of apprehending offenders that abscond from residential treatment facilities under PRS, which is supervised under the Michigan Department of Corrections. Additionally, for the adult tether services, we are capable or enabled to provide adult tether services for individuals pre-trial that have been sentenced to, that will ultimately be sentenced under PA 511 in an attempt to avoid overcrowding the jail. As it pertains to drunk driver jail reduction, we provide a five-day holdover assessment for individuals that have been assessed or charged, either their current charge or have a history of operating while under the influence, the third offense. This assessment allows us to determine whether or not the individuals are eligible for community-based drunk driver jail reduction treatment under PA 511, our comprehensive application.
The sheriff actually does the assessment, then?
The assessments are performed by the ETRS, which is our vendor that provides the drunk driver jail reduction treatment in the community. I mean, they were procured through a RFP.
Yeah, but it's, oh, but it's the sheriff that procures them?
We procure them, the five...
By sending money to the sheriff?
Five-day housing. The sheriff houses them for five days in the jail in an attempt for them to be assessed and screened by the treatment specialist that will ultimately provide the treatment in the community.
Okay. Well, for me personally, I'm going to want to take a little longer of a look at this. You referenced PA 511, and you get these categories in law, and then you find out how to drive the square peg into the round hole in order to say, yeah, this provision allows us to do this. Because what I'm looking at is the community corrections dollars, and I guess, like, the highest use of those dollars. And so me personally, I'm going to look and do a little more look and to see, is this really the highest use of community corrections dollars? We have, over the last six or seven years, I would say, have had slight decreases in, like, our CMO contracts, and we've seen co-conident rises in recidivism rate with our youth. We still have a pretty good number, but it was not as low as it was eight or nine years ago, so I'm, I'm interested in keeping those numbers as low as possible when I think of community corrections dollars, a higher use. I just, I don't know if any other committee members had questions, but I wanted to bring it here, at least for this discussion, so that the committee is aware of, of this and how it's being handled. Mr. Manning, you had something?
Yeah, just, just a bit of context, the business of...
Oh, no, that blows my whole...
PA, I know.
Give me context, oh my God.
Well, for, for, a lot of the business of this grant doesn't come before this committee.
Right.
Typically, it's a public safety and judiciary.
Right.
The Public Act 511 is basically an act from 1988 and, you know, it's setting up community corrections advisory boards, but the purpose here is to divert people from prison. That was step one. And then the county went from 41, 4% to...
For recidivism?
Prison commitment rate.
19.1%.
Right. So we have a huge reduction in prison commitments, but that meant there were a lot more, you know, supervised probationers in the community, supervised or in residential. Part of this apprehension funding is to offset costs borne by local communities for supervision of offenders that would have otherwise been, you know, under MDLC jurisdiction.
And we do have a community corrections advisory board in the county.
That's correct.
I believe a commissioner chairs it.
Commissioner Clark Coleman, PSMJ chair is the chair.
And so all of this data that I'm talking about is seen over there?
That's correct.
By those?
Seen here as...
Commissioner Baker McCormick, aren't you sitting on that now too?
No, I've attended, I mean, but I'm not on.
Okay. Well, that's, any other questions on this discussion item? All right, thank you very much. Moving the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Next, item E, such other matters as may properly be submitted before the committee.
What, no more contracts? We need more contracts to discuss. Is there any, some such items that the department or any commissioner wants to make the committee aware of? Mr. Manning?
My annual IDs of September. Thank you to commission staff for, and, you know, council fiscal program for the end of the year work that goes into squaring the books, so thank you all.
Yeah, and that was a lot in discussions with people of getting these routine things done today. If it leaks over into the new fiscal year, that's, so thank you. Any other some such matters? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk?
Item F, public comments.
Any member of the public wish to address the Health and Human Services Commission, Committee of the Wayne County Commission?